I'd like to call the order, the Westmont Village Board Meeting of March 1st, 2018, order at 6 o'clock PM, and ask Clerk Simmsky for roll call.
Mayor Gunther.
Here.
The clerk's here. Trustee Addington.
Here.
Trustee Barker.
Here.
Trustee Berry.
Here.
Trustee Guzzo.
Here.
Trustee Little.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Attorney Zemanek.
Here.
Village Manager May.
Here.
Finance Director Parker.
Here.
Would everybody please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone. This is an enjoyable meeting. We get to honor some of our employees, but before we do that, I am opening open forum. Anybody here who has a question about anything on the agenda, now's the time. Seeing none, I'll close open forum. Moving on to my report, I'd ask Chief Weiss to please come up to the podium.
Thank you, Mayor. It's an honor to be here tonight. Every year, the Fire Department amongst all of its employees at the Fire Department selects a firefighter or employee of the year, and we're here tonight to present that individual that was selected. We have an internal committee that is chaired by all employees. There's about five or six of them within the department that get the nominations, they review those, research them and stuff, and they make the recommendation to myself, which I then either approve or not approve. So what I like to do is invite the chair of that committee out. Come up now to read nomination. Joe?
Thank you, Chief. Thank you very much. Good evening. I am Joe Kalczynski, Captain of Westmont Fire Department, Chairman of the Awards Committee. The Westmont Fire Department is pleased to announce the selection of Lieutenant Kevin O'Hare as Firefighter of the Year of 2017. This is not Kevin's first time receiving the award. He was honored in 2013 as our Firefighter of the Year as well. Once again, Kevin has been clearly identified as a top candidate by the selection committee of his peers. He was nominated for this award based on his leadership skills, communication, professionalism within the fire service. Kevin began his career with the Westmont Fire Department in September of 2002, and after 16 years, we've seen him grow into the position of Lieutenant Training Officer. We'd like to recognize Kevin for his diligent work, his efforts to advance the Westmont Fire Department's Training Division as well. He consistently demonstrates his dedication to the Fire Department by leading various training and developmental plans and projects. He's always up for training at the station, and with his enthusiasm, will most likely be leading it. Kevin is an asset for any crew. He brings a calm demeanor and positive work attitude to work. Kevin also serves on numerous committees and fulfills the role of President of our Firefighters Association. He's able to strike an easy balance through it all. Kevin is known for having a fantastic attitude, a quick wit, absolute dedication to the community that we serve. As well as being a member of the Westmont Fire Department, Kevin was hired with the Harvey Fire Department in July of 2006, where he currently holds the rank of Lieutenant. The Westmont Fire Department will always remain a first-rate organization with members like Kevin stepping up and going the extra mile. His efforts show why our department is such a special place to work and serve. Lieutenant O'Hare was voted Westmont Firefighter of the Year for 2017 because of his diligence, hard work, and positive attitude. On behalf of Chief Weiss and all the members of the Westmont Fire Department, we would say thank you, Kevin, and we look forward to your continued growth in the profession.
I ask Kevin to come up now. We're going to present him with his plaque, 2017 Firefighter of the Year. This award is presented Lieutenant Training Officer Kevin O'Hare for his outstanding service to the village of Westmont, signed by the mayor, our village clerk, and myself. Mayor?
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you. Are you ready?
Glad to be on.
All right. Thank you. All right. I want to thank all my coworkers out here. It makes it easy to come in with enthusiasm and a good attitude when I get to work with such amazing individuals. Many of you are previous award winners and future award winners that I get to work with, so it's a pleasure to work alongside of all of you, so thank you. And thank you to the chief and your staff for providing me all these opportunities and support to reach my goals. I really appreciate it. And finally, I just want to thank my wife for being so supportive and encouraging. Without her, I wouldn't be able to spend half the hours I do and meet the goals I have, so thank you, Olivia. I also have some service awards. I'd ask Larry McIntyre to come up and explain this new process.
Thank you, Mayor and Village Board. Over the last several years, we have had a customer service award appreciation program in which we honored our staff that went above and beyond the typical call of duty, and over the last few years, we've revamped that into a new program now, which we are now calling our Public Service Awards Program, and this will be the first time that we're presenting these in this manner. Basically, each department, through the department head, led the process in creating the nominee process and then selecting a person, so we're going to announce those names now. Manager May?
And not to, well, to, it was described, we've kind of changed our process for doing this. It's nice that we're doing, you know, the Firefighter of the Year too, because the Fire Department is a very well-established system and tradition for doing this, and modeling off that and creating these categories of other public service award acknowledgements was done in a similar method, kind of based on the same criteria as that were described in here as well, and we do have six different categories where everybody gets to, you know, not just the department heads, but the peers. So in some departments, this is, you know, a big change in the process, but essentially all staff is involved and participates in both the nominating and the selection of doing that, and we've narrowed down the six candidates. I'll just quickly describe, I'm not going to go through the whole program, but we have a category for administration. It's mostly everything that's in the Village Hall, aside from Community Development, which is its own category, larger department. We have the Fire Department, Police Department, Public Works, and then there's a sixth category that's, to not exclude, you know, our biggest category is the volunteers, whether it's, you know, EMA-based, or, you know, there's small stipend, but essentially elected officials are also eligible to participate in this category, both nominate and receive, and these are all for things that are above and beyond normal, the expected, you know, the good public service that we all give, you know, every day to this community. So I'm not, I'm just gonna, I think at this point, we'll just read the names in those categories, and if...
The next step, what these five will, six will...
So this is an internal process for us. We've all done the acknowledgements in different ways. We have tried to standardize that, and at a village level, these are our nominees and our recipients for the 2017 calendar year. From here, we will give all of these names. We have a community-wide recognition program too, that the Chamber of Commerce program and sponsors, and for a public servant or, you know, a lone public service of the year for the entire village staff, will be done through the same process that the Chamber does with the rest of them. So we'll take these six award winners and put that in their hands for, you know, independent, not scrutiny, but, you know, review and recommendation for that. So if you'd come and help, I'm going to call up your names and just the category, the mayor's got, you know, a plaque for you, and if you would remain up here, we'll get everybody's photo as well. I'm going to, it should be no surprise, in the Fire Department, Lieutenant O'Hare, sitting here, is the recipient in the Fire Department. Yeah, please. In our Administration Department is an IT employee, Alan Pucciano.
He's getting this on his birthday, too. Hey, all right.
In Community Development, Melissa Brendel. Police Department, Officer David Hamblin. Public Works, one of our foremen, they're already excited about the Public Works recipient, is Jeff Bonk. And these are the recipients that are here tonight. There is one more category. We had the volunteer category that I explained. Not with us this evening is Angela Yang, and she is our, well, she has a lot of roles, and they're newly presented to the village, newly, you know, as far as in the recent past. But Angela, with Taiwanese, the Chicago-area Taiwanese Chamber of Commerce, involved with our, you know, TICO organization locally, and was the, at the, well, she's the top of the list of the, as far as the driving factor that drove not only the possibility or the sister-city relationship we have with Shinhu County, but the rate that that happened was all due to her participation. She is in Taiwan right now, working on yet another, you know, sister-city aspect. There's no, this is a volunteer category, there is no compensation for this, much of this, although it's probably in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, but there's, you know, it's all her effort and time as well. So I want to congratulate her.
One other thing about Angela, she's been responsible for us getting in contact, Judy Su, and you'll hear later on, we were on TV this morning.
I'm going to have you all come over here to the center if that's all right. I'm going to get the other end. Your side.
Mr., I understand, you would normally let them speak like the Fire Department did, but I found out Mr. Bonk had like five pages of prepared remarks. And Chief, do you want to, what we're doing next door? We have an acknowledgement with the cake next door.
And again, it's tradition here that the Fire Department shows up in support of their individual that's been honored, and at the same time, it's tradition that they have cake.
Yeah.
So you'll see them leaving right now to congratulate him and enjoy the cake, so thank you.
The Public Works have a strong showing for just, I was wondering, I thought it was a little group award, but it was all the guys.
And really, that's all I have, and I turn to Clerk Simmsky.
Well, I'll just go over the election upcoming primaries. The general primary election is March 20th. Voter registration is closed at the village right now until after the election. Registration will reopen on Thursday, March 22nd, and you can register to vote online for the primary by Sunday, March 4th, at OVA/elections.ill.gov, for anybody that wants to vote online. Happy belated birthday to you. It was yesterday, and your wife's was...
Well, he doesn't remember.
Monday.
They're very, they're right next to each other, so it's very, so happy birthday to both you and Tony. And then I'm, you know, it's a happy day, and it's a very sad day for Spencer and me because of our Kathy Titillo retiring tomorrow. It's, we're going to miss her. She opens for me at 7:00 in the morning so I can do my work, and she's always got a beautiful smile on her face when she walks up to that counter to help people, and I know they're going to miss her. So, anyway, we wish her all the best. So, and that's all I have.
Well, thank you. Now, turn to the trustees, and I'm going to start over here with Trustee Nero.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things. For Public Works, we're going to host our second annual Water Tower Model Building Event, which is next Saturday, the 10th, 9:00 AM at Westmont Junior High. And our next Public Works Committee meeting is March 15th, 4:30, right here at Village Hall. And lastly, I just want to congratulate the Westmont Junior High on a successful Pizza Wars event last night. It should be noted that there was a judges panel that included Kevin Carey, Superintendent Carey, Deputy Chief Riley, and Chief Gunther, Police Chief Gunther, and myself, and after a long debate, we had about eight or a couple extras, maybe 10 or 12 slices of pizza, wanted to make sure we tried it all pretty good, you know, and we analyzed everything, sauce, crust, cheese, flavor, but it was a tough battle. Took us a while behind closed doors. We came up that the judges' favorite was Westmont's own LNF Pizza of all the contenders, so it was good. I mean, the place was packed, they had to raise a ton of money for their media room furniture, so it was nice to see. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Trustee Little.
Thank you, Mayor. Recapping the Administration-Finance Committee that we held at 4:30 this afternoon, there was discussion regarding the selection of a new audit firm, discussion of a new insurance benefits cooperative. Village employees will be receiving new insurance cards soon, and employees definitely are not losing with the change, they are definitely gaining. HR is currently getting ready to distribute employee handbooks, new village employee handbooks. Finance Director presented slides showing the health insurance savings over the last 12 years. Congratulations to the department for coming through with that information, because that's a big, big gain. Deputy Liquor Commissioner conducted hearings this morning on five underage sales violations, and as usual, all the Administration-Finance Committee meetings are open to the public, and I invite you all to come out and join us for the next one, which will be April 12th. And then, in addition to that, I have special, Westmont Special Events is hosting the St. Patty's Day Jig and Swig. It's going to be held on Saturday, March 10th, from 2:00 to 6:00 PM. Four participating locations are DJ Sports Bar &amp; Grill, Uptown Tavern, Neat Kitchen &amp; Bar, and Myths &amp; Legends Brewery. Sign up online at westmondevents.com. PVPN will present Light Spirit on March 9th through the 11th, and the 16th through the 18th at Westview Hills Middle School. And then, last but not least, I'd like to invite Greg Pillup to talk about The Race to the Flag.
Thank you very much, trustee, and welcome, everyone. As the newest member of the Westmont Park District staff, I was, one of the duties I was charged with is becoming the race director for The Race to the Flag, and this year will be our ninth year. It's a fundraiser to raise money for the People's Resource Center right here in Westmont, so it's a Westmont event, helping out a Westmont community organization. And I know it's on your consent agenda tonight, and it's a little early in the season, but I just wanted to take a couple of minutes and refresh everybody's memory. So it's part of the larger red, white, and barbecue event, which takes place over Memorial Weekend. The Race to the Flag actually is on Sunday, May 27th this year, and as I said, it's our ninth running. Signups are open right now at racetoftheflag.org. You could sign up to run, walk, family, whatever. We've gotten aggressive this year with the marketing and fundraising, and we are well ahead of last year's pace. Our runners signed up to date are now equal to May 12th of last year, so we hope to set a new record for both in terms of runners, walkers, and people will be eating pancakes also afterwards, as well as fundraising, so...
Cooked by the mayor.
Yes, cooked by the mayor, absolutely. So it's a wonderful family event. You can go out, you can see one of our starts here from last year, right up there, and we had a lot of fun with that. This is the official date, and pardon me for penciling in the website, but it's racetoftheflag.org. I just wanted to make sure that that was up there so that people who are watching this at home can take a look at it. And one final note, there are occasions where we run specials to encourage people to go ahead and sign up, and there's a rumor, there's a rumor, I heard this from a leprechaun, that starting Monday, March 12th, there will be a seven-day special, and it will be paired to the NCAA basketball tournament. So you might want to keep an eye out and take a look at the racetoftheflag.org, also see us on social media, and I'd love to get your support, even if it's just to sign up so that your money goes to help the People's Resource Center. It's a 501(c)(3), it's tax deductible, and it's a great cause. Thanks for your support.
What's the logo on your shirt?
This year, we will be having the Power Blue shirt, so we're known for changing the color every year. We haven't gotten the first one in yet. Oh, this one's coming up next.
All right, I thought so.
This one's coming up next. Anyway, Power Blue is the race color this year, and it's a ninth, we've had nine different color shirts. So I love when I'm around town and you see people wearing the shirts and walking around with different, you go, wow, 2009, you know, 2012, you can tell because they all have the data, and it's sort of a neat thing to see, so thanks so much.
And Greg, two individuals that were very instrumental in starting this race, Mike Ramsey and Kathy Casey, it started with the Municipal Committee, Health and Wellness, to promote health and wellness, and the Park District inherited or took it over because they no longer had the support to do it, about three years now, three years ago.
Yeah.
So it's under Greg, and Greg's an expert in running.
In running, yes. I do a lot of running, yes. That's my area of expertise, yes, absolutely, watching runners. To the table, often, yes.
Organizing races.
Yeah, that's a better way to say it, yes, absolutely, absolutely. Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Greg. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Trustee Barker.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things this evening. On Monday night, this past Monday, we had a Westmont First meeting, and we discussed a couple of things at that meeting, and the highlights were, some conversation was started about public art and the thought of having an outdoor mural, and that's what we've determined is there's a lot of work behind that, and we'll have ongoing conversations about, you know, what does that mean to Westmont, is that possible, but there's a lot of excitement for that. And secondly, we set a topic now for our April 16th meeting, and we're going to have another one of these focus group meetings that we did with the seniors. This one is going to be with service groups, and we're going to reach out, invite all the service groups that we can, bring them to the table, and talk about, you know, their particular organization, and how that functions, and how they can coexist and share responsibilities. And then also, one of the highlights in that was how do they show appreciation for those folks that do volunteer in their service organizations was important to the people at Westmont First. So we're looking forward to that on April 16th. And then, on Monday night coming up, on, what is that, the 5th, we have the EIC, Environmental Improvement Committee, and we will be discussing several things, but I continue to try to bring focus to the Richmond Gardens Project, and getting that farther along than it is and developing that in a greater way and a faster pace. And then they also want me to remind everybody that there is, at the library, on beginning Wednesday, March 14th, is the beginning of a speaker series, and this is on winter seed sowing, so if you're interested in winter seed sowing, you can attend that on March 14th between 2:30 and 3:30 PM. Those are very popular and very well-attended. That is all. Thank you.
Could I compliment Westmont First and the topic, because I know service organizations are losing members. Maybe there's a way they can work together to continue with their programs. So I'm going to turn over here to Trustee Addington.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. First of all, Community Development Committee is going to be meeting on April the 26th at 4:30 here. Lot of new items that'll be on there, including looking at some properties that we might want to annex into the village, as well as some changes in some of the codes and ordinances. So anyone who's interested, please come 4:30 on the 26th of April. The other thing is Tuesday morning, due page, Mayor's and Managers Legislative Committee meant, not a lot to report. There's a lot of action down at Springfield. Most of it's busy action. They're not even meeting right now. The Senate meets a couple days a week, the House is meeting at different times, they're not meeting at the same times, and they're really not meeting in session, they're doing committee meetings right now. There are a lot of new bills being introduced. There is a ton of new bills that are talking about restrictions on guns, and a lot of these new bills, not only those, but all the others that are being introduced right now, haven't even been assigned to committees yet, which means they're not even being discussed. So, but we're looking at things being, picking up, not this month, probably not until April, when I think the House and the Senate both take a two-week vacation after the primary. That's their spring break, and I think they're both supposed to go back in session the first week in April, and any new bills that are to be introduced in this session are supposed to be introduced no later than April 13th. So at that point, I think there'll be a lot more committee meetings, a lot of these bills will have been assigned, and we'll have a better idea where we're going. Couple of things just to point out, because I think they are more than a little interesting. Senate Bill 2823 is requiring a non-binding referendum for the November ballot that says, do you want your real estate taxes frozen or not, on a more permanent basis? Now, no one has really seen everything with that. It's, like I said, it's a non-binding referendum, but that's there. We'll keep everybody informed on that. That's probably something that we would want to look more at. And then the other one is Senate Bill 2946, which is trying to amend the TIF laws, that if you have a piece of property that's in a TIF district, and that TIF district either is retired or gets to the end of its time, that any properties that are in the first TIF district cannot be put into a... TIF district cannot be put into another new TIF for 15 years. And of course, we would very much be opposed to that, ours and another community. So I put a report on your desk, you can take it and read it, and I gave Steve a list of all the bills. There's, I think, Municipal League had two 20-page lists of bills that have been introduced.
It's not the bills themselves, it's just the list of bills.
Just the list, yeah, this doesn't even, yeah, not the bills themselves. So there's a lot going on. There's a brand-new one that I don't think anybody's really seen yet, but Mike Ramsey, you might be interested in this one. Apparently, there's a Senate Bill 3080 that's going to require municipalities not only to clean up any lead pipes that we have, that are ours, but also clean up those that are in the private sector. I don't know if you've...
Okay.
So you're aware of it. Again, I understand cleaning up ours, but I don't understand why we would have to clean up somebody else's.
Yeah.
But that's basically it. The only other thing is, I see that mayors and managers sent out today a request for action to do a resolution approving our legislative program for 2018, so I'm assuming we'll put that on Steve for the next agenda. Okay. And that's it, sir, thank you.
And again, trustee Addington has been graciously took the assignment of being our legislative trustee to stay on top of this, because these bills being introduced could affect non-home rule communities, which we are. They're putting stipulations in, they're starting to look at raising fees, and I think it's important that trustee Addington stays on top of that.
We did introduce a bill, by the way, that would allow, it comes from mayors and managers, that will allow the use of part of the hotel motel tax money for any purpose. That has been introduced this session, hasn't been assigned yet, but I'll keep everybody informed.
Wanted to add on to the comment, for those who may be listening that are concerned about the lead services issue, the opposition to the bill is not opposition to the subject matter, it's just where do we take responsibility and where does the property owner take responsibility? We already address everything from the water main to the shut-off valve or the B-box that's roughly at the property line, and this bill would address going from there, you know, up to the wall or into the house, or I guess up to the meter, with that expectation. So we had a similar topic when, it was about the testing of the water quality in schools, like at all the fixtures, water fountains, and in bathrooms, and that was, in a similar way, we helped administer the test, but there was a big question about whose responsibility, at first there was a big question, whose responsibility it was to absorb that expense of the investigation of which it turned to the property owner ultimately. So that's our same position is, just where the line's at, and for us, it's at the B-box, and we do take care of everything else.
Thank you. Move on, trustee Guzal.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple things. The Citizens Fire Academy class is starting March 20th. It runs through April 17th. You can still sign up, westmont.illinois.gov. Check it out, it's a great opportunity. Secondly, the next public safety meeting will be May 24th, 4:30 here in the Village Hall. Keeping with our public safety, daylight savings time begins Sunday, March 11th. Remember to turn your clocks forward one hour, remember to change your smoke detector batteries. So change your clock, change your battery. And lastly, the Knights of Columbus is still holding their Lenten Fish Fry, they're at 25 North Cass. It runs from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Fridays during Lent. Last week, they had a great crowd, so I invite everybody to come on out, it's a great time, the food is wonderful, and you're helping a great organization. And I think that's it, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Barry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Marie, I'm going to go right from the Knights of Columbus to announce that the Westmont Rotary Club is hosting their reverse raffle at the Knights of Columbus, coming up on April 27th. Most of our service clubs do these reverse raffles. The Rotary Clubs happens to fund local scholarships, and there's a chance to win money, but I think most of us really enjoy the experience. It's a lot of community members, much like the Fish Fry, where the Knights really do a great thing of building a community. And again, April 27th, tickets are $100, and if you see a Rotarian, they have them on them, so thank you. Would also like to thank Chief Gunther. Long before the Florida school shootings, our schools are patrolled on a daily basis by our police officers, and I'll tell you, as a parent dropping off and seeing Sergeant Gomo and these, Teeter and these guys, nobody's messing with these guys, okay? And it's very reassuring as a parent to see those guys there in the mornings and the afternoons, so thank you to that service for all of us. Now, very exciting news, we talked about volunteers earlier, and we have a great one here with us. Greg Pill today was on Channel 7. I had a chance to record it and watch it, and I've mentioned to several people, we could not have paid a PR firm to do the job that Greg Pill did today. I mean, it was a commercial for Westmont, it was a commercial for all of the restaurants and Restaurant Week, and if, Greg, if you could please come up here and just, what a great job that was done today. Please welcome.
Thank you, trustee. I appreciate coming back up again while my makeup is still fresh. And I just like, I guess, you know, Elvis said, "On the cold and gray Chicago morn," I'd like to add "wet" in there. So 10 of us intrepid volunteers went down into the city representing four of Westmont's finest restaurants, and that's four of 100, along with representatives from the Chamber and the Village of Westmont. And we were live on the 11 o'clock news with Judy Sue today, and there's a picture up on the screen, that was our ragtag group up there, and we had a lot of fun promoting Restaurant Week. Restaurant Week begins tomorrow, on Friday, March 2nd, and it will run through Sunday, March 11th, so it runs for 10 days. I'm excited to say that when we were on TV, we're actually a little out of date already, so we mentioned that there were 26 restaurants participating. Since the TV show aired, we are now up to 29 restaurants. So we have close to 30% of the restaurants, and that's a wonderful, wonderful turnout. And if you go to the Chamber's website, which is available at westmontchamber.com, and click on the Restaurant Week logo, that's also the same one on my shirt, Mayor, so you were asking about that earlier, you can go ahead and look at all 29, well, 27 of them are up there, the other two will be up early in the morning, they literally just occurred just before the meeting here. So all the menus are up there, they're priced at $10, $20, $30, and $40, so you can pick something that's budget-friendly. They represent so many different cultures, so you can pick something that's got an ethnic tendency, something you like, maybe it's a special occasion, you want to find something a little fancier, maybe you want something reasonable, a $10 lunch, they're all out there. So we're looking forward. Back to Judy Sue for a second, she's been wonderful at helping us promote Restaurant Week. This was our second year on there, and there's something I'd like to ask everyone in front of me today, as well as all of our viewers. There's four things you can do to help us with Restaurant Week, and it doesn't involve even going to a restaurant. The first one is to go to Judy Sue's Facebook page, so that's Judy HSUABC7, Judy Sue ABC7. And the first thing is to watch the video. The more people who watch the video, the better chance we have of coming back. So that video broke at about 3:30 this afternoon, it's already at 2,600 hits and climbing. So last year, we broke 40,000, our goal is to hit 50,000. So if you can watch it, that's great. If you can like it, that's even better. If you want to leave a little comment, that's great. And the ultimate buy-in is to share it on your Facebook page, because all of those views track back to hers, and that's exactly what the crew chiefs at ABC look for, what her publicist looks for, and lastly, what Judy looks for. So if we want to get back and we want more cooperation, I ask everybody to help us out with that. It's been shared across a lot of different platforms already, but I ask everybody to try to step it up and help us out over the next week or two. Any questions about Restaurant Week?
What were the restaurants?
So today, we brought four, and they're a different group from last year. So we had Bakersfield Woodfire Grill, which is under the Standard Market umbrella, right there on Ogden Avenue. Vince Atore's joined us, they'll be celebrating their 20th anniversary in Westmont on March 23rd, they'll be running some specials the week of the 18th to the 25th. So in addition to a great dinner menu for Restaurant Week, they'll have their own specials between the 18th and 25th in honor of their anniversary. Safran Indian Cuisine, which is down on 63rd Street, so the Roy family came from India and started this restaurant, and it's basically the American dream come true for somebody. And they had a great, great spread out there. By the way, at the end of this, we fed 30 staff members. So, you know, the key at everybody's heart is through food, my mother taught me that. And so we brought as many staff members in, and the restaurateurs provided a great spread, and there were so many wonderful comments about, "I've never had Indian food before." And finally, our fourth one, you can't have Restaurant Week without a diner, we had the Citrus Diner. Those were the four.
They're located up?
They're at, in St. James Crossing, at Pasquale and Ogden Avenue, in the northeast corner of Westmont. The Roma's family has been in the restaurant business for 45 years, and actually, there's a pot-belly restaurant right on the corner next to the ABC Studios at State and Lake, it's on the southwest corner. That was the site of the first Roma's Family Restaurant. Quite a tie-in. Any other questions? I hope to see all of you out there, Restaurant Week is starting tomorrow. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Greg, thank you. Along with Greg and the Chamber and the Economic Development Committee, our next meeting will be scheduled for March 7th at 9:00 a.m., and we meet right here next to the Village Hall, in the room next door here. And a lot of people are excited, there's a mixed-use redevelopment project at the southwest corner of South Cass and West Quincy is proposed for review. This has been before EDC before, and a lot of people are excited over this project. So we encourage the public to attend. And then today, the TIF Joint Review Board meetings were held this afternoon at Village Hall to review the annual reports for both the central business and Southwestmont business TIFs. And then lastly, Mr. Mayor, this is special from Patty, I have to make sure and put this fundraiser up for the library, let me see there, how am I, for the library and Uncle Bubbs, in conjunction with Uncle Bubbs, sorry about that, guys. So if you go on Tuesday, March 13th, to Uncle Bubbs, and tell them you're the friends of the Westmont Public Library, proceeds will go back to the library. So that's all I have for you today, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on, items to be removed from the consent agenda. Any trustees seeing? If not, I'd ask manager May to please read.
This evening, on the consent agenda, first is Village Board Minutes, board to consider a motion to approve the minutes for the Village Board meeting held February 15th, 2018. Next is Finance Ordinance Number 21, the amount of $904,068.51. We have six purchase orders, the first purchase order is Westmont Chamber of Commerce, $20,875, represents the 2017-18 tourism services. Next is Gary Weber Associates, $48,380. This is the PO that accompanies the design contract that was awarded regarding the gateway signs. Next is Illinois EPA, $25,984.86. This is our semi-annual, it's a debt payment, we have a loan through the EPA for the water main project that occurred on Burlington Avenue, along Burlington Avenue years ago. Next purchase order, Emmy Simpson Company, $31,648. This is for valve exercising, it's valves, it's water main valves exercising, so we make sure they're all operable and in good working order. The next two purchase orders are also for WPK Engineering, Willesburg Kelsey Engineering, for two projects, also contracts already awarded, these are the accompanying purchase orders. The first is for the stormwater design improvements at 61st in Richmond, which was an open space grass area there on the dead-end Richmond, and similarly in Ashford, the next one is for Richmond 63rd, it's the storm, it's the stream bank stabilization and the work in and around that pond. That brings the total of the purchase orders, $239,787.86, and the total of purchase orders and Finance Ordinance Number 21, to $1,143,856.37. Still on the consent agenda, we have community events, and we have five special event permits, if you will, on the agenda. First is 2018 Red, White, and Barbecue. All of these events are all duplicates of previously held, and I won't go through all the circumstances, but they're all in the same size and format and request that was in previous years, but they have special features for each one. So the 2018 Red, White, and Barbecue, to be hosted by the Westmont Lions Club, May 25 through 27, includes a community events permit, including street closure, interlicense fee waiver, amusement fee waiver, live amplified sound permit, and a tent permit fee waiver. Next event is the 2018 Race to the Flag, was described earlier, May 27th, 2018. The request includes community events permit, including the street closures, and live amplified sound permit. Third is Westmont Cruisin' Nights and Street Fair for 2018. Board to consider this ordinance for the following requests from the Westmont Special Events Corp. for 2018 Cruisin' Nights and Street Fair. Tent permit fee waiver, live amplified sound permit for event hours, and street and public right-of-way closures. Next is U.S. Luge Slider Search Midwest Tryouts, board to consider an ordinance approving the following requests for those tryouts to be held on June 16th and 17th. Request includes community events permit, including street closures, and live amplified sound permit. Finally, yes, the last special event is 2018 Taste of Westmont, board to consider an ordinance approving the following requests to Westmont Special Events Corporation for Taste of Westmont. Special event liquor license fee waiver, amusement license fee waiver, tent permit fee waiver, live amplified sound permit for event hours, street and public right-of-way closures. That concludes all of the consent agenda.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Addington.
Second, Little.
Motion made in second to approve as read. Any questions? Seeing none, roll call, please. Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Guzal.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes. Mayor, just as a point of order, for the Red, White, and Barbecue, we are, I know it says no changes, but we're talking seriously and should have done by next week. I think we're going to do a Friday night steak competition, it's something new that we're going to try, so that might be very exciting, and we might need some celebrity judges that night, so.
I got good training, especially for steak.
That's right, you did.
More of a pizza guy. You better let me in on the steak.
Trustee Addington, it doesn't affect the public right-of-way, it's just an added event.
Just an added event, but steak can be fun.
Yeah. All right, moving on, unfinished business, Nycor franchise agreement, board to consider ordinance approving a franchise agreement with Nycor to construct, operate, and maintain a gas distribution system in the village. I'm going to turn to either attorney Zemanak or manager May for more information.
I'll get started. This was before you in early January, and it was postponed at that time, so we get some information about their mapping system. In all other respects, the ordinance that's in front of you is the same, with one exception, the original ordinance provided the village with free terms for village-owned buildings that use natural gas. And speaking with manager May, village-owned buildings, which there are only a small handful, use very little natural gas, and that free term allocation wasn't going to be that beneficial and would not actually promote energy conservation. There was another option, which was getting a payment from Nycor in lieu of free terms, and that's a formula that's set forth in the letter attached to the ordinance, but it's partially based on the population of the village, and collectively, we thought that was a better deal for the village to take advantage of, and Nycor said, yes, we can accommodate that, because they do it for some other villages. So I also reached out to Nycor's council about trustee Little's request about obtaining access to their mapping system, and they contacted promptly manager May, and you can report on that.
Yeah, we did, and the question was, is about proactive or, you know, access to their GIS Atlas system or as-built records of their system before we get into construction projects, of which there are mechanisms in place on how to do that manually, but was the, you know, the request was, you know, access to that system, and they did...
know, the request was, you know, access to that system. And I did call right away, and I spoke with them, and media guide access to what they have. I'm gonna put this in two parts. It was a great suggestion. I'm grateful to have it. It's a pretty archaic system, and it's loaded with qualifiers, like we take no responsibility for any information in it. But it's still useful to have. I don't know that it would have prevented these circumstances that we ran into, but nonetheless, it's good. And then the part two of that was the, they're revamping it, remodeling it. So they were a little hesitant to, you know, give us access now because it's gonna be bigger and better, of which I think today was the, I didn't check, but soon they'll have a more user-friendly system, you know, to do that. So thank you for the suggestion.
Trustee Little.
That's all in order. And we, before the meeting at the Administration Finance Committee, talked about the Nycor contract and the Hudson Energy portion of that as well.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Little.
Motion made in second to approve. Any questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to new business. 336 West Naperville Road, involuntary annexation. Board to consider ordinance approving the following request from the Village of Westmont to involuntary annex the subject lot into the Village of Westmont. I turn to Manager May.
The, I'm gonna kind of introduce the topic in general. We've discussed it before in that committee, but we have many parcels around town, some of them that we're just newly learning about, where they are wholly surrounded or, you know, contiguous to the village on our side of a planning agreement and available to be incorporated in the community. These two parcels are specifically related to our work and our efforts and investigation into the special service area for the fire protection services that we talked about. So there's, I'm gonna describe two in a row because there's two addresses here, and they're separate agenda items. But the first one is 336 West Naperville Road. Is wholly bounded, well, it's wholly bounded by one or more communities. There's one edge that's the Village of Downers Grove, but per our, our mutual boundary agreement, it is on our side of the planning area and is available for annexation. And down the block is 138 Maple Avenue, which has a different street name only because their mailing address is the Downers Grove Postal Service, but it is a Westmont parcel. And I think it was the 336 Naperville Road example. We weren't even aware that that one wasn't in the community until kind of, you know, another GIS-related, you know, comment when we were reviewing the county data and looking into other things. This was pointed out. And so in both cases, they've been behaving as if they were incorporated and getting essentially the services that all other residents get.
I have a motion to annex.
Motion to annex, Little.
Second, Guzzo.
And the question.
If I may comment briefly on just procedures for this. The state statute provide, normally you voluntarily annex someone when they ask to be annexed and they're eligible. In this case, there's a state statute that says if one or more properties contain 60 acres or less and they're wholly surrounded by one or more municipalities, the municipality can involuntarily or force annex that property into the community. And Westmont's done that before with other properties. It helps clean up these islands that exist. And in order to do that, we did publish notice in the newspaper as required by state statute, did mail out notice to the taxpayer of record, did provide notice to the county and some of the other taxing bodies, and certainly if anyone was here, which doesn't look like they are, they'd have the right to step up and comment on this.
Thank you. Trustee Barry.
Are one of those properties under construction right now?
When I made reference to her already receiving services that, you know, like other residents are, in the one case where we were unaware that it was unincorporated, we even issued a building permit.
I guess that was my question, is how does that affect us moving forward with permits? And if it was under county or under us, but apparently it was already under us.
They thought they were under you.
Lucky them. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Motion passes, and we move on to new business B. This is what Manager talked about. 138 Maple Avenue, it's the involuntary annexation. Board to consider ordinance approving the following requests from the Village of Westmont to involuntary annex the subject lot into the Village of Westmont. Manager May have anything else?
No, it's the same circumstance, the same situation, second address.
I have a motion.
Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Addington.
Motion been made in second to approve. Any comments, questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
The motion passes. New business.
Tying that back to the special service area, I talked about, these two parcels are not included in the special service area, and so this cleans that up as well.
New business C. Felony Investigative, oh man, felony investigative assistant team intergovernmental police service agreement, or we just call it FIA.
Say it twice fast.
Just couldn't get that out. Board to consider ordinance approving a successor intergovernmental police agreement between the Village of Westmont and the felony investigative assistance team for shared public police services. Chief Gunther.
Thank you, Mayor. The felony investigative assistance team was founded in 1998, and we've been members of that group. This is the task force that we are most heavily involved with as a police department. The services that are provided are SWAT, major crimes, planned events, K-9 response, and computer forensics. So the Irma took a look at the intergovernmental agreement from 1998, strengthened the language to indemnify member agencies in order to protect us from liability claims that could arise in the future. So this is just an agreement to freshen that up and move forward. Any questions?
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Barker.
Motion made in second. Any comments, questions, anybody? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business D. Insurance Benefit Cooperative. Board to consider resolution approving the Village of Westmont to join a new municipal insurance benefits cooperative in which to purchase employee insurance benefits. I got Director Crane or Manager May?
I can start with the introduction, or if there's any questions. We have, you know, you've heard this concept twice, lastly at the Administration Finance Committee earlier this afternoon. The, this resolution is actually authorizing the village to, or actually authorizing us to enter into this new benefits cooperative with the insurance committee and
Agenda did less times than the reports.
Wasn't gonna get into the plans and everything. They're nearly identical. This is merely the authorization to join this new cooperative, form the new cooperative, and sever the connection with the existing cooperative.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Addington.
Motion made in second. To approve. Any other comments? I think the key here is that it's similar or better. It's not gonna cost us more, so.
Less expensive.
Less expensive.
Save us a buck or two, yeah.
I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Motion passes. Miscellaneous. Anybody got anything they'd like to mention?
I just wanna congratulate all those, our workers that got nominated for it. They are all wonderful. All our employees are wonderful, but they're at the top of the list, so.
And as I, you know, we heard the top six tonight, but there were dozens of nominations, all nominated by their peers, so there was, I liken this new process.
I like it. It's nice.
And that'll be awarded at the Chamber Awards banquet on April 30th at the Hilton.
I'll get my dinner.
So along with our Citizen of the Year and several other community awards.
This was a whole week's.
Seeing no other information, I need to call the executive session. A motion to adjourn the executive session to discuss the purchase of property for the use of the village pursuant to Section 2(c)(5) of the Open Meetings Act. Two, the setting of a price to sell property owned by the village pursuant to the Section 2(c)(6) of the Open Meetings Act. And three, pending litigation to discuss the cases of Westmont versus Biatus and Macon versus Westmont. Do I have a motion?
Motion to go into executive session for the four reasons mentioned.
Second, Little.
Motion made in second. I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
We will be adjourning into the executive session. After executive session, there will not be any further business, and then we'll adjourn the meeting. So I thank everybody for coming.